Eric.
Anya?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Livy?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
I declare we have a forum. Let me get my glasses on real quick. And I guess I had to approve the minutes, uh, last week. I'll prove the minutes with the then.
Thank you.
Call a paper?
Hi.
Aye. The prayers? The ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, new business. Yes, Marshall, both people to us to propose a twenty twenty-three budget to the council. Come on. It probably do that.
Okay. Okay, so, I know we had our budget workshop and we went through a lot of it, so I'm just gonna give you an overview of what we did and we came to couple things to change after our workshop, so. Um, basically, um, we have a three percent, um, in the for the salary for entry. Um, I've added, um. Basically, most expenses around three percent, some of the things such as gas is really high, obviously, so I've had to adjust the budget for those types of items that we've really gone over on. Um, and in the last of those, um, if budget really hasn't been used, I've left those the same and didn't, you know, increase those. Um, then the, um, I added, um, since we last talked, I did add a planning position that was requested for about fifty-one thousand in benefits and everything in the chart. It was determined that he would rather take this part-time person to a full-time person and not have two part-time people, so I took them out and made that a full-time position because obviously we had benefits and purchasing. That assets, you know, makes quite a difference, or it was pretty much washed itself out, like, that was a change that we hadn't talked about. Um, then, um, pretty much, I mean, our benefits, you know, I normally do a fifteen percent, ten to fifteen, utilities ten percent, I mean, those are pretty much standard of what I do. Um, so, basically, um, overall, our budget. If you take out the R. O., which we didn't get, um, our budget increased about, um, thirteen percent. Um, because we did have, you know, some police positions that we talked about, um, and so that caused things to go up. Um, everything we, you know, really there wasn't anything that we didn't discuss, um, that went up. The circuit breakers last year were four seventy-three, this is one of the questions I, I'm still waiting to get an answer from. I'm moving them up to five fifty, but in, um, Gateway, they're showing seven fifty, and so for whatever reason, some of my. Off, some of the government units that I've had, they've been right on with their same, but quite a few of them are ten-five. This one, I think, is really high, so I think five fifty is more reasonable, but I have to get it changed so I can do that, and I think this is realistic as far as where we are, and, and that really has. Well, I mean, I think that that increase seems pretty good as part of that. Um, I am working with, um, Buzz on the levy appeals, um, which probably will be, um, public hearing, we'll talk about that for the next time, which is part of that. He also, I talked to him again today, I think we're also gonna be able to do that next year because there's nothing increases, we have nothing increased this year, and we think we're gonna do it next year, and that gives us, you know, about sixty-four thousand dollars extra this year. So I think it's, I mean, that's just estimate, but based on where we are, that's, you know, I think pretty good as far as that. The sub-value has gone up, um, quite a bit, which is why we can do that, which then all causes our levy to go up, which that's helping that. So those things are helping us be able to pay for these additional things that require our budget for that, just to let you know as part of that. Um, for public hearing slated for October third, and then, um, we, the approval is on October seventeenth. Um, I probably will also be doing public hearing for some additional appropriation for some, um, monies that we've had set back for road work and things like that. Um, but it's getting with Joe and things like that, so we'll probably do in that next meeting as well, but that's all included within this budget as far as doing that in our cash and everything. Also, work like, the biggest thing I've done to work through is the, um, circuit breakers and where we are on those because it's affecting the levy and the cushion that I have to have on the budget for it to work cash-wise. So, but everything else, every, that's pretty much everything, you know, the other, the other thing that we talked about, um, I did add the annual control for the thirty-five thousand as part of that, that's in there. The trash contract, um, with Joe, because we had doubled it when we talked in the meeting, and then, so what we did is I did it for twelve fifty per resident, and I based that off of, it's nineteen hundred residents, but I made it two thousand, so like three hundred and I just made revenue. The same, I made just a little bit less on the revenue just for collection duty issue, just to be conservative as part of that. Um, I don't think there was any other big questions, does any, did you guys have any questions after we had our meeting or anything that was different?
I don't have any questions based on meeting, but trash contract increase. Do you think that's too dreadful, I should say?
Well, Joe's got this from a couple places.
We could dance on how we structure, and I know the last time. The bid we got was elevated like every year it went up a little bit, from the way the council chose to do it, it won't take a lot of experience to make that up, like, be going forward. So not knowing how the bids are going to come in this time, or baiting it out three years and five years, so if it gives a projection of what's going to be five years, and if go with that, it could be, you know, a little bit higher than that. So with some of the other bids, I'm hearing not below a bid, probably.
And I can put it at a fifteen and just put the revenue at fifteen, so it's gonna be the same off.
It'll be a wash.
It'll be a wash, but that gets you more room with your budget, we don't have to do additional appropriation, so I can't do that. For me to do that, I mean, that's fine. Okay.
I think my last question is, um, you're pretty confident in circuit breakers, but aren't they just high?
I, yeah, I mean, I'll let you know if it's not, like I said, I was hoping to hear back from you today, and I haven't, I. Last week, I, of course, I wasn't able to count.
Have you thought on it or not this day?
Uh, you know, I try not to think about it because it's not good. I mean, watch ways of cuts if you do, so I, I think, I really feel pretty confident that it'll buy.
Let's, uh, move on to the next, on the new business, council considered creating a study committee to council members of three, planning permission members to propose modification to the zoning ordinance. Instead, the select division control ordinance being a comprehensive plan. A discussion. Got any volunteers? I just wanted to get you guys off the floor first, and then, uh, we'll, uh, pick, or we'll, we'll get three volunteers, both then, mission.
Yeah.
Oh, what we're gonna do is, uh, we're gonna start looking at the zoning a little bit better, uh, to maybe encompass even the outer little neighborhoods, make sure our, the wording there is. I don't know, in better words, um, what is the meaning of what's sub, subordinate? You know, like, you have a garage, it'd be subordinate to the house, and then there'll be certain sizes, they'll be more specific in there. In the other word, we're talking about like, like material needs to be in there, so if your house is brick, you're building a garage, it should be similar appearance. So we're gonna go over that, uh, and then what we'll do, we'll post those meetings and everybody can put in there, because what I was hoping to do is, what's gonna be put the committee to, I was scared for it to be really loud. What I was, uh, hoping we could do is get some realtors in there, some people from the outside of the community in there, and kind of put our heads together, because what we're doing is, you know. Affects more people on the outskirts than it affects us, so we need to get some more opinions on what, what they would like, not, or what we like on to them. Um, it should be more, uh, collaboration between everybody. Does that make sense?
Uh, well, is it, is this something that, uh, that you plan to have quickly, Chris, or just ongoing like?
Uh, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have some meetings together, I gotta get the planning commission involved, get three of them together, and then, um, have similar what we did before, um.
All created.
Created. So it's gonna be ongoing process, you know.
Will they be advertised?
Yeah.
What are they coming out about?
That way we can get more, but. I think the last we pulled together was just a lot of stakeholders in town, and it might not have been. But what, what I, what I do is a different comprehensive plan, but particularly with that. So everything's on hold until that commission's, like, on? Uh, no, not everything is on hold, but right now, are you talking about, um, Kate Burgess? Right now, he. They put a hold on everything, it's up to him to, uh, either comply or, uh, ask for variance, right? So it's just sitting there.
So there's no variance request at this time that you know of, Chris?
No, I don't, I don't know, is there a time limit that, that, if he just leaves it like that for two and three years, there, there's got me kind of moving.
I wish.
You know, we haven't. It's the first I've, we've contemplated that, I mean, but what he was saying is that, uh, he was planning on addressing the situation soon. Okay, so, that's why he told me that stuff, he's, it's, the ball's in his court, what he's gonna do.
So some formal updates to the conference to plan or just? Kind of a dozen?
No, no, we're not gonna, we're gonna make upgrades to the conference. And that way, um, we've already discussed, because we already have Old Town Forum, you know, it covers, you know, the more restricted the book you could build, but we need to encompass that to the outer areas also. But I think maybe what Cheyenne was asking is, at the end, once the committee has its recommendation, that I think the intent is, what you would reference, would be to formally update the conference.
Okay, so it's entirely within our.
Yeah, so that it's in the conference, updating. Will serve as a guide for how this is coming up forward, so if you updated it as progress plans.
So you all wanna up the public, not that they don't wanna have time? And even though we get, you know, and find it to be there, but it's angry, and we can come and assess it then.
Yeah, we want, we want to do similar, similar thing, but bring some more people in, uh, this part of here.
So Old Town would be Garden Street, the north side, and our neighborhood would not be south of Garden, would not be included in Old Town.
It would probably not be as restricted as Old Town, or would it be, or, you know, it would sound like, yeah, it'd be up to, it'd just, let's do this.
That would, we would be included in this.
That way, everybody knows what they can do, and it won't be as, it'll be more structured, whatever.
We wanna encourage those people that aren't in town to come and, and watch their city, because that's where, that's where the growth is happening, it's not happening right here in town, so you need to get with people that it is happening around, and let's see what they like and what they think. I think that's best for you.
My pleasure. Okay, all right, thank you, um, council, to hear the first reading ordinance amending pertaining to rates and changes to the public, I mean, I'm sorry, to a partial department.
So briefly on this, this is just as, as you said in the, in reading the agenda item, this is the ordinance first reading that would amend the fee schedule to include the proposed fees that he came to the council with. The la- last meeting, I'm sure, and maybe the meeting before as well to discuss, um, to cover fees for like food vendors and summer fest and winter fest, um, entry fees for the five K race, food costs for candy's cause, and. I'll throw your attention, we discussed this in the meeting, um, I made that subject to, and so like Philly state twelve dollars, Italian sauce is ten dollars, chips a buck, soda a dollar. And food's getting more expensive, and so I left some latitude there, and this is just for your consideration, drop that down there, but that's subject to an increase, um, of not more than fifteen percent without council approval, so that, you know. Funds go up, you know, a nickel a bag, if you can make that adjustment without having to come back at this point. So, this is first reading tonight, all of that's still up for discussion and force, um, everything's for the public, the Princess Tea Party, um, mother daughters, twenty-five dollars, and each additional child, five dollars, nights in the park. Um, ten dollars per ticket in the Newport Penguin Show, bongo drum circle, free to the public. And, you know, again, this, Joe had some discussion about this last time, it's really just a way to make sure that if and when the state board of the council audits the town, we've got council approval for the fees that are being charged. And there's a connection in that checks and balances and best practices that, that we need to have, so.
So like the parks have a different program that's coming, will change again, or will?
Yeah, we could add another, as, you know, market grows, we add something, or if we decide that, you know, these fees are too expensive, or, you know, unlikely. Too, you know, cheap as electricity and everything's getting more expensive, and they may need to do business with, but.
I notice, we make this relative, we're in the new year, because the summer fest is already happening, please, the council approvals, please, but multiple documents and manus, that was approved.
Yeah.
They were just cleaning it up.
It just cleaned up, exactly, the council has the ability to approve after the fact something that it hadn't been able to approve beforehand, and so with respect to state board of the council, I have that, that is a fairly show that. The council had approved businesses, formalizing, or the last, if it's already occurred for those.
On the Main Street business in charge, probably need to change that so it can drop, but the other businesses can get in there, and they, they're using electricity, they probably should pay for it if you wanna run that route.
That was the question I had, because when you're saying Main Street wasn't, that they would, you just referring to what you're supposed to be? Because I didn't feel like he was referring to restaurant, I think it's in mine.
What you said is they all pay the fee.
It's the Main Street business in the park.
Main Street business, that's what we.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, I, I think they're referring to the tees, trying to encourage them, but that's my question, I don't know, as, as Main Street business, I pay for my vendors.
Okay, that probably needs some, uh.
Again, this is just first reading, so I've got a note of that, certainly add that in, I don't know if he's just calling in or what that. So maybe we can get some, look for a piece between now and the next meeting and make some adjustments, but certainly if this, the council can other persons, so, and what you all think about.
So it probably should be all reduced in town instead of the Main Street business, you know, showing.
Maybe scratch that, people would say, scratch Main Street business, that's our.
I would say.
Just scratch.
Food can pay, and we're usually keeping, um. Well, should, should make some money, um, the Main Street businesses, I feel like if we're having events in the park are losing that, some of us, they actually want to go down Main Street, and I heard from different shops, not necessarily the tees. But they also are on the top that don't have a staff, and they can't close down and be there if they don't, you know, and pay the fee when they, so maybe that there's no charge for those tees, maybe they would be more encouraged to go and, but. I don't, I'm not at all.
Yes, guys, this is the first reading, we can change before the second. I know, but. May, maybe you allow, um, a particular business to come in and petition or an offset or a reduction because of a special service. I mean, it's gonna be tough to do a one-size-fits-all, it's, you know. Right, so maybe leave, place some latitude that, you know, like having alcohol in the park, Norton says you can't unless you go for the council, and you guys say that, that you can, and I, I think we could incorporate some language like that if, if you think that's the way to go, but. It'll be interesting to hear what he has to say, I don't recall what his intent was specifically, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth.
As you say, what, all this, doesn't, they might. Just wait, and still, this. And I think I have a hundred, you know, but you know, I don't know for like candy's policy, I don't have a problem, it should be used if you wanna pay, or if you can pay. Right, yeah.
I'll run for two, do I, want to table for three, or do I need to call over there?
Well, four, I mean, when's the next, like, we've got winter fest, it's not until.
And we do first reading, then, then, what is that?
Yeah, either is fine, whatever the council's comfortable.
Make motion to three ordinance number twenty-two dash ninety-eight. All in paper?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, thank you. Okay, uh, Joe, you have anything for us?
A couple things, I don't know if you saw your liability thing out, there was a questionnaire or, um, very. It's a, I guess we're already compromising, and we need twenty people to sign it, to draw a order Monday morning, and others who are older, uh, they're in the conference, and so, so then ask the, the council members, the ones that, yeah, to do that, sign up on it. Thank, uh, the, so, you know, so far. They'll, uh, we'll go up at the past Monday morning on the front porch, and the daybreak, I'll, I'll come to fourth through. I just got us in the morning. Monday, and we'll be back. And with that, let you know, two, it's the, here's your position, the real one, you got to, you know, one of the, started today, and I'll bring you the next day, introducing, uh, Nancy Robinson. So we got him from the court, so, you know, so important to get on with him, and then we got another general that, you know, about bringing in the decision later, I don't know if he gives an employee a notice, but, so, you know. Maybe you're probably. Down in that, this, but it looks like we have another obligation, so.
That one piece, I have, but it's great.
Uh, we got one, kind of, we got, maybe so doing back, in the back mall, you know, and we got another one in South, but, uh, unfortunately, yeah. That's the ones we're running back from. Trash queens been sent out, now it's got all those kids down for us, and we got those, uh, advertised, like, some, quite a few big tackles to different vendors, and, and a few questions come back, but we've heard everything yet, yeah.
I'm starting to lose my mind about grades.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up, there it is. And then we're starting to pay these, we, uh, look at getting an analysis fee, and sent that out. At least two weeks ago, and still we need to, first, we did a, um, for that. And we hear something, I know that, so waiting on some payment minutes to provide the information, and I'll get that off and brought in, hopefully we'll get it, tell us, and get the, check us the privileges and report, and just get the payment, I'm looking for shit. And the last thing I've got is, uh, the property that we purchased, a six-point forty strong, that's to give you the south medicine extension, and, you know, we've got stuff about. You know, we need to create that surplus and go ahead and send that, bring that building, clear it out, other than we can just maybe tear down a hallway, move it, whatever, if we can ask somebody to get that off the park.
They don't want, they, they all do it. We need to try to find a way. Uh, come on, we got, uh, the stock, uh, there's somebody will move that, it's just, if those, those reinstalled homes are like, oh, they're, they're tanks, somebody will move that for them. But with inside of it, it's not, it's, it's mostly, it's kind of like the little blue doors, it's, it's kind of an L shape, do it up there, I'm just, yeah, I think, I'm gonna do that somewhere. They move it, exactly. Somebody wants to know the fee, but I don't, I haven't noticed, uh, you can just get a bid to remove, anyway, either demo, or, 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 or will be.
I'm doing, how, how much do you need to prepare that surplus before we do that, or how do I?
We can, and the, yes, there'll be a, so let Joe and me talk about which way to go, and then we'll make sure we follow these steps to get, yeah, we make them out.
I didn't think about it, I'm, I'm, that was the surplus, when they, well, someone hasn't been away, and that's kind of like a surplus thing, and.
There are ways, we, we talked about something before, when it comes to our tree, or, or, that sometimes we did, or you did, zero, the tree, so maybe the, the, the house, we, zero. But we dig the house, and, you know, they, they, I'm sure they take it up on the, so let Joe, let Joe and I talk about that.
You guys are aware of this, before, yeah.
We need to declare surplus, we will.
That's, it's, uh, let's see. Town hall, coming along, uh, I'm not giving positive, such a, as far as, I don't know, anyway, we can, we can, we can, but, but, I'm gonna keep my fingers, probably, first next month or another.
Yes, next month? Somebody answered today, but now it's gonna be, uh.
We're gonna be both. Taking a no-brander out of the table.
There's, uh, there is a issue with the fire ring doors, um, fire doors, they're gonna be firing, automatic closures, and there's a little bit of delay on this. I'm fearing, you know, in November, before we hit those, um, they're looking to put some temporary oars, and see if they can give you bearings, there could be a senior, um, they're closing up. They can make that happen in nine months.
The inside's pretty much done.
It's being real close, all the metal racks hanging, ceiling panel, I mean, that, they're licensing, you're registered for.
Yeah, so, right, that's, you know, someone, you say I'm coming in eight.
They're starting to work on the floor. I think there's, I think there's, we're interested, maybe, let's look for the, I mean, there are a few of those.
Certain rooms that always, I don't know, you get, see, it's been out.
Yeah, we're gonna pay the first, no, more, I mean, she's safe this year, and then, two, one. And we send it to the. I don't know, we need at least one, even I'll have the water testing, I'm afraid.
I'll send you whatever.
Good morning. Thirty, I'll, 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 I'll replace my, I don't know, you should.
You know what you think of the call?
Uh, it'll be for the water, it won't be messed up, it's a good land, and it could be a little way down the river, we just sent out for the, the, from last year's. That's why, I, I'm, I'm seeing them from, from number, and, 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 and.
Um, any other questions to do?
I have. Um, nothing new in particular, I hope the, the weekly, obviously, so we're sending out, I think, to the public, and, and everybody in the booth, and, uh, if there's any question, I, I don't, keep that. Um, nothing new on the paper, I hope the, the weekly, obviously, we're sending out, I think, it'll be helpful, and perhaps, bring everybody in the booth, and, uh, don't like to do any question, I, I don't, keep that. Other than that.
Did you say that, in that way, are you saying that, because they did find that they're gonna reach out to?
They're like, yeah.
Yeah, underfill, the cast so far, if anyone starts coming.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't wanna give your cell phone number, so I, you contact them, and hopefully.
But anyway, I thought, I thought it was, sure.
I'm just kidding, we follow what you said, so.
Okay, so, he's still here, uh, this reason I hear, uh, gee, I'm on it. Good evening, uh, the same voted Joe, we filled our last two positions today, so I'll bring them to the next council meeting for introductions. Have a couple, uh, new reserves that I'll bring, one's retired Greenfield, one retired sheriff's department, uh, so we'll get some experience on board, which is good. The only other thing I had is, so our upcoming, Alex, did you ever check to see if Robert in the police commission? That, I think, the way it was written, was the council wants a police commission.
Yes.
It's not for a term, it's for, I think.